Okay, I'd like to call an order, the July 9th, 2013, special meeting of the Glendale City Council being called to order at 3:07 PM. We have a roll call.
Council members Friedman.
Here.
Jarien.
Here.
Harrow.
Here.
Nanyan.
Here.
Mayor Weaver.
Here. May I report, please?
The agenda for the July 9th, 2013, special public meeting of the city council is posted on Tuesday, July 2nd, 2013, on the bulletin board outside City Hall. Item one on this agenda, city manager regarding proposed installation of a Korean sister city comfort women peace monument within the newly dedicated sister city area adjacent to the adult recreation center at Central Park. One is a motion approving the installation.
Thank you, Mr. Cho.
Yes, sir. As you know, we have sister city relationships in several cities, and our Korean sister city has given us the opportunity to move forward with a monument memorial, if you will, regarding the Korean Comfort Woman movement. So with that, to give you the details, our community relations coordinator, Dan Bell, will give you the staff presentation.
It feels rare to say it, but good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, council members. What you have before you today is, as Mr. Cho said, a proposed report for a submitted plans for the Korean Comfort Woman Peace Monument in the ARC, next to the ARC in Central Park. As you may recall, some time ago, a report was submitted by Parks. It was based on to change the name of Central Park. That was denied, but as part of that, came out of that was for staff to explore dedicating a piece of land for sister city monuments or memorials. Until this recently, we got this submission from our Korean sister cities. Nothing had been done. Like I say, on March 26th of this year, the council did approve to designate an area of the park adjacent to ARC for monuments and memorials of our sister cities with the direction that be included, that we would bring this before you today. So what we are bringing today is, it's not on the big screen here, but you can see the mock-up of the Comfort Woman Peace Memorial. There we go. And the location superimposed outside of the ARC at Central Park. So that is the report at this point. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Mr. Jarien.
I see that the mock-up of this... Hello?
Yes.
Are you dead?
I see the mock-up of the statue. Is there a plaque that will contain some language regarding the comfort women issue? And if so, what? Has that been decided yet? Has that been prepared?
Yes.
Will it be bilingual? What?
Actually, it'd be in English, and it would just say that it's commemorating in honor of the comfort women.
Okay. Yes. Okay, thank you.
Okay. We'll go to public testimony then. There's no questions. I'd like to welcome all of you to Glendale that are not from Glendale, and those that are from Glendale but have never been in the council chambers before. It's a welcome sight. Just like the record to reflect, the vote on this was not unanimous when I was here before. With that, there are 26 speakers. We're going to allow two minutes. I've received over 350 emails in opposition to this. None... Well, no, I got one in support of it. So I think I know where the majority of you lean. I don't think there's a whole lot to what you want to say, other than you're either for it or against it. Maybe you have a little rationale behind it, as your emails have shown. So I'll allow two minutes each. That'll take us about an hour to get through all of these. Okay? And you don't have to use the whole two minutes if you do not wish to. So with that, we'll begin.
Mr. Weaver, I want the record to show that 99.9% of those emails in opposition were from Japan, not from the United States, or specifically not from Japanese Americans who lived and have been born here in the United States.
Very good, very good. Okay, with that, our first speaker is Alex Wu.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and honorable council members. I am Alex Wu, president of the Korean Glendale Sister City Association. Would like to sincerely thank you and the Arts Culture Commission on behalf of the many Korean-American residents of Glendale and hundreds of thousands of Korean-American residents within Southern California, who commend you for making, for taking the bold steps to give this issue its due justice it deserves. The city of Glendale has made a bold and historic decision to erect the Peace Monument in our great diverse city. I strongly believe that this decision will elevate the city of Glendale as a city that promotes and champions human rights. Thank you very much. Before I leave the podium, it gives me great pleasure to introduce you to Ms. Phyllis Kim, the spokesperson for the Korean-American Forum of California, who has worked tirelessly to make all this happen.
You took the words out of my mouth, Alex. The next speaker is Phyllis Kim.
Thank you.
Followed by... Just so if I mispronounce names, I apologize. Mizuo Takahashi is the next speaker. Right ahead.
Thank you very much, Mayor Weaver, Mayor Weaver, and the honorable members of the city council. I'd like to extend my sincere gratitude on behalf of Korean-Americans, as well as American citizens who feel strongly about the human rights issue. The issue that is represented by the Comfort Women statue, which is the Peace Monument, Peace Memorial, is an issue that speaks to everyone, is a universal issue, not, you know, specific to any one ethnicity, but for all women especially, we are concerned about the sexual violence that is still happening in this world, especially during the time of war. So the, you know, this is to education, peace for our younger generation, and I am really proud to live in the city that has taken a bold step to, you know, speak to the public about correcting history and teach ourselves not to have the same atrocity repeat itself in the future. And that, and to briefly, for some of you who may not know in the audience, the U.S. House of Representatives has passed a resolution in 2007 urging the government of Japan to take official responsibility and officially apologize to the victims and to teach the young generation by including the facts about the comfort women system in their textbook. And that...
That's your time.
So Glendale, as I know, the Glendale takes a great interest in the human rights issue, as the Armenian descent in Glendale may know.
Thank you. My time is up.
Thank you very much.
Next speaker is Mizuo Takahashi, followed by Tomoyuki Sumori.
Thank you very much for the opportunity today. We submitted a letter of request regarding this proposal already. I hope you have read it. If not, please, please read it before you vote. Thank you. Dear council member, Mr. Mayor, I appeal to you now. I would sincerely request you to disapprove the proposal, as we view this is a Glendale city issue, not Korean issue. And somebody said it's not a human rights issue, but this is common. I mean, there are lots of human rights issue, including some in other Asian countries. The proposal, free from any... Can insist that they are free from any such human, human rights issue. I mean, I have a specific idea. I hope you, council member, mayor, you make a decision on the spirit of fair and justice spirit. And comfort woman issue is not, is a controversial issue. You have, I hope you have exhausted your investigation, independent, unbiased investigation. This is so controversial that unless you have made thorough, unbiased checkup, you should not make judgment now. At least you should defer it until you find it. And I, I will, maybe I have lots to say, but, Mr. Mayor, messers, council members, do you still believe that you plan to...
Thank you. Your time is up. I'm sorry. But when the bell rings, that's the time. If I allow more time for one, then I have to allow more time for everybody.
I haven't finished the conclusion yet.
Well, I'm sorry. Okay, look, I'll let you speak, but I'm telling everybody, when the bell goes off, your time is done.
Mayor, have a second chance.
You can finish it, but everybody else be prepared for the bell. You will be done. Do you understand? That's the way we do things here. Okay, you finish up because you didn't know what the bell means, did you? You understand?
No.
That's what I thought. When the bell goes off, that's it. But I'm letting you go on because you did not know what the bell meant. That's your two minutes' time.
Yeah, I know that.
You know that already getting up here? Goodbye, goodbye.
Thank you.
Okay, I guess everybody did understand. Tomoyuki Sumori, followed by Yoshiko Goto.
Who's the next speaker, Mr. Mayor?
Tomoyuki Sumori.
I think the speaker stepped ahead of the other one, this gentleman right here.
Sorry, I missed on the name.
Takahashi.
So you were Tomoyuki?
Yes.
And who are you now?
Goto.
Goto.
It's Mr. Takahashi.
Yeah, he was the third speaker. It's the third speaker you called, Ms. Weaver. I think the other speaker jumped ahead of him on accident.
He should have gone first. He should have gone.
Okay. Mr. Takahashi, you go next. We'll get it in order first.
Hi, my name is Takahashi. This is just my story. I just came to the States 41 years ago by American President Obama, to fulfill my desire to see the world with my backpack and hitchhiking. Before going to the south of border, I worked as a houseboy at John Wayne's residence in Newport Beach for some time. After 20 African countries and Middle East, working at Kivutsu in Israel, I reached India, where I'm visiting some villages around Himalaya with my pony I purchased through the villages nearby. I went to USSR Armenia, Georgia, and Azerbaijan before they came to the independent country, into Republic of China, 1985, and 86 Cuba. I was told that I was the first Japanese individual traveler after Cuba revolution in 1959. Okay, now, I just wanted to say one thing. Looking at those 75 countries I visited, I've never seen anything like that kind of so-called peace monument, other than in a communist country, where there's lots of well-planned propaganda. Now, I don't think the city of Glendale is one of them. Do I have 20 more seconds?
Yes, keep going to hear the bell.
Last month, 1,000 members of Japanese Defense Force came here in order to work with U.S. forces, Navy, Armenia.
There's your time.
Okay.
Okay? Thank you so much.
Very much.
Okay, now, am I back on track? Yoshiko Goto? Oh, we're back on track. Okay. Your name for the record.
Okay.
Your name?
My name is Yoshigoto.
Got it.
Mr. Quintero, did you make a trip to Seoul?
Please, Mr. Quintero.
With whom? This is our question. You were taking pictures with Comfort Women statue in front of Japanese Embassy in Seoul. You met Comfort Women there. Comfort Women matter is a matter of democracy, diplomacy between Korea and Japan. The U.S. Constitution, Article 2 says the executive power shall be vested in a president of the United States of America. Secretary of State does all things outside the USA in place of the president. So my conclusion is that you might infringe upon the president's power. Ladies and gentlemen, did you ask some questions to Japanese side consulate general of Japan in LA regarding this Comfort Women matter? Yes or no? If not so, this is too one-sided and unfair. Democratic decision matter must be fair. You must investigate this matter more carefully. You need more investigation. This, the fact is just one.
Thank you. Thank you for your time. Yoshi Miyake, followed by Andy Naoki.
My name is Yoshi Miyake, and it's starting already, right? Okay, thank you for giving me opportunity to speak. I'm opposing. This will not bring peace, happiness, prosperity, or honor to the city of Glendale. This is against sister city spirit, because this is fabricated stories made by Koreans. This will bring out hate crime and conflict in the future. I'm very disappointed that city of Glendale only hear Korean side of the stories until today, and it is ignorant to decide right away without investigation and research to know the truth. In those days, Japan, Korea, everybody were poor. As you know, Japanese are very quiet people. We don't want any conflict, always thinking about future. I'm not trying to criticize Koreans, but whatever they are pushing now went too far, and it's getting ugly. It's about time for them to face the truth and reality. The Comfort Women were, as U.S. Army noted in August 1944 during the World War II, comfort ladies are nothing more than prostitutes or professional camp followers. These girls were allowed to refuse customers if they want to, and they were making at least 50 times more than average Japanese soldier get. You call this sex slave? And I only have two seconds to go. Thank you.
Thank you. Right on. Okay, another rule of the council chambers is no clapping or booing. So both sides are out of it, okay? Next speaker is Andy Naoki, followed by Baba Nubuh, Nubuh Hero. Nubuh Hero. I'm trying, I'm trying. The name for the record.
Hi, my name is Andy Naoki. I was born and raised in the city of Higashi Osaka, sister city of city of Glendale. For more than 10 years, I am liaison or coordinator between Glendale Unified School District and Higashi Osaka. Every year, 38 elementary school students and chaperones visit Welsom Middle High School for basketball games and class activities. Eight high school students visit Glendale High School to promote mutual understanding every year. The year of 2015 will mark the 55-year anniversary of sister city arrangement between Glendale and Higashi Osaka, my hometown. But I heard sad news from my favorite city, that's Glendale. City of Glendale last year declared 30th of July as Korean Comfort Women Day. Learning this news, we believe that many people would think that city of Glendale will celebrate Korean prostitutes on 30th of July every year. We are concerned that Korean news is spreading wrong images of your city all over the world as a city of praising prostitution. Our honorable mayor, Mr. Dave Weaver, we believe that you guys cherish and defend fairness and seek justice and the truth at the same time. We hope that you will not approve the installation of Comfort Women monument within the dedicated sister area.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Let me make it clear again, good old English, no clapping, no booing, neither one. Respect the sanctity of the council chambers. Okay, next speaker is Baba Nubuh Hero, followed by Kiko Sujie.
My name is Baba.
Baba, yeah, that's what I said, I think.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
I said Baba.
Thank you very much, giving opportunity. Thank you so much.
Yes, go to the part he's...
Okay. I have one thing to say. This decision is unfair. You should do Japanese historian to talk, okay? And we, Japanese want to do, get along with anyone. Japanese came along well. History proves it. Glendale city, do you want to be fight each other, Korean people and Japanese people in the United States? Do you want? One thing. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next speaker is Kamiko... Huh? We're almost there. Kamiko Fujimaki? Wait, wait, what's your name? Wait up. Huh? I'm getting out of work again. Did I call you next already?
No, she just got up there.
No, I hadn't called your name yet. Baba, followed by Kamiko...
Yes.
Oh, I see. You're next. Okay, Kamiko Fujimaki.
Yes, my name is Kamiko Fujimaki. Korean war between 1950 to 1953, the North Korea, supported by China, and South Korea, supported by USA, as you know. And I heard that from the U.S. military, they had prostitution station in Korea and running by Korea government. And then those women are very aggressive, and I have a question about this. And one more thing, peace monument, the purpose for peace monument is for peace, not for the, like, remind that the scar for the war. And then I feel I wanted to really tell to everybody, no more fight, no more war. Hate is wrong, the dignity of lives. We cannot change the past. So let's live, let's living for now, in this moment. And so we are living for positive future only. We are children of God. I'm talking about God, I'm sorry, but I'm believing in God. And God is love, as you know, and love is all. I think we better believe that, we did not fight, no more war. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker, Kiko, how do you say, Sujie? I got it, followed by Yasuko Mikajiri. Right ahead.
Thank you. How this comfort woman issue started was this Japanese communist Yoshida wrote a book about comfort women in Chechejun Island. He admitted two years later that what he wrote was lie, and he wrote because of the money. Many Japanese journalists and Korean journalists researched about this and find out that is not true. And she's saying, why Japanese not complain for that? I feel we should speak out because this is going too far. I don't know why city of Glendale tried to give permission to build the statue. It will bring hate crime to the world, and it is, I think it is not good for children of the country. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, Yasuko Mikajiri, followed by...
Hi, good afternoon.
Yasuo Morano.
My name is Yasuko Mikajiri. Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and the members of council. I feel very privileged to have the opportunity to express my concern about the proposal of a comfort women peace monument. When I heard of this project, the following questions puzzled me. What are the true motives of each party involved? On this project, what role does the city of Glendale play? What a poor taste in choice of the statue for the symbol of peace. My comments on this issue are as follows. First, according to the various records, the Comfort Women were paid monthly as much as 25 times more than that of their Japanese Imperial Army clients. This does not look like any type of slaves. Second, the issue has been particularly difficult subject for both parties, that means Japan and Korea. One of the main reasons is, in my opinion, as a professional psychotherapist, that both Koreans and Japanese live in a culture of shame. Following the Confucian tradition, unlike the culture of guilt as in Judeo-Christian countries such as the U.S. and Europe, this culture made the whole issue very, even more complicated, especially in finding enough number of reliable witnesses from both countries. Third, the Japanese government has apologized to the Korean government numerous times in the past, almost after every election of a new prime minister. Fourth, I understand the comfort women issue was resolved in 1965 by reparations of $1.8 billion paid by...
I'm sorry, your time's up too.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for coming. Next speaker is Yasuo Morano. Next speaker is Yasuo Murao.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you directly. My name is Misao Murao. I am not here to deny or mitigate the suffering that some women endured. The history of comfort women is a tragic legacy, but abhorrent practice, not limited to any particular ethnic group. Placement of comfort women monument without more exhaustive and unbiased research, it institutionalizes a biased view. I think this is not an appropriate gift for the city of Glendale. The sponsorship of the Comfort Women Memorial represents a political agenda. More than twenty locations for this statue is being sought actively. I would implore the cities of Glendale, Goseng, and Kimpo to reject this memorial, instead focusing on a memorial that symbolizes the friendship between sister cities, something rich in culture and tradition that encourage and inspire a positive impact on visitors and natives. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Oh, please, 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 again, no clapping, no booing, please. Yashiko Abrary.
Good afternoon, council members, this is Yashiko Abrary. I have learned the news that the council of Glendale supported the idea of comfort women. I can't believe that the city of Glendale supported this idea without investigating enough. Japanese and Korean authorities investigated and concluded that there were comfort women in Korea that time. That is the truth. But no historical documents have ever been found by historians or research organizations that the Korean women were forced to be comfort women by Japanese army or government. No evidence. I want to ask you, have you ever seen the document? Without seeing their legal document, how could you make decisions? I want to ask you, each of you. You met the Korean people, you hear the story, you just believe it? You have to investigate, you have to listen, you have to study. It's a lot of lot of material to learn. Even the Japanese, we didn't know a lot of stuff. I just learned a lot because I read a lot of books. Lately, I am so interested in history of Korea, so I learned a lot. We didn't know a lot about next neighbor, we didn't know, but I learned a lot, I was interested in, because they are neighbors. We have to have a peace, that's why I want to know everything. So you guys, I think you have to study too. Without knowing, how could you make decisions? If you know something, please show me the document. That's what I want to say. So I think there are a lot of material to learn before conclude.
Thank you.
I really appreciate that I had the opportunity to speak.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker Kyoshi Mera. Am I saying wrong? Koichi Mera? Am I saying wrong?
Yes.
Your name for the record?
Yes, Koichi Mera.
Oh, I got it.
Well, I used to be teaching at USC Marshall School of Business and International Business. I took students to Korean corporations several times, so I know Koreans very well and I have lots of friends, Korean friends. I have made a speech at the first Korean-American history conference three years ago. I urged cooperation between Korea and Japan. So I have lots of, well, say, respect to Koreans as well, but on this particular case of the Comfort Women Memorial, I am strongly opposed to this idea. There are four reasons. One is that the story told by Koreans about the comfort women is not based on the fact. It's a kind of say manufactured story. They were not, say, well, so they are recruited by the private corporations rather than, say, Japanese government or Japanese military. In fact, there is a document produced by US government Office of War Information in nineteen forty-four, which surveyed comfort women. And their conclusion is that they are nothing but prostitutes or military camp followers. So that is a conclusion of the US government's report investigating the comfort women. The third one is.
I'm sorry, sorry. Thank you very much for coming. Terumi Imamura? Imamura? Imamura?
Hi, Mayor. Thank you. Thank you for this opportunity. My name is Terumi Imamura. I am here to say I'm against the proposal to set up comfort women monument. My concern is this will give the people of the city or people of this, people living in here, a wrong message because it is a very sensitive issue between two countries. And if you want to come into this one, I have to request you to study or research some more and avoid the one-sided. According to Japanese government, the government or military were not involved in abduction of comfort women as claimed, rather, record shows that they were trying to prevent that from happening. The comfort women were well-paid prostitutes, not sex slaves as claimed. They were not forced for prostitution by Japanese military. Some of the women were sold to private people or group by family members to save from poverty. And these women are responsible, selfless women who put their lives for their families. And for that, I really respect them. Mr. Quintel, I saw the pictures that.
I'm sorry.
Well, I didn't want to ask you that.
You can talk to Mr. Quintel later if you wish.
Thank you.
Welcome. George Ogasawara.
My name is George Ogasawara. I'm living in thirty-five years illegal as America here. I love very much in America, USA. Everybody is so beautiful place. But today, I'd like to say first, this approve the plan to place and bear comfort women statue at the city central library. This is ridiculous. So this is abolish the instituted July thirty Korean Comfort Women Day. This is awesome. Now, those are, this issue too controversial, Korea invests on their theory and so does Japan on theirs. Thus, impossible to reach common conclusion. Under the circumstances, the city of Glendale, local municipality should be neutral and not get involved in a diplomatic and historical matter such as this. This is an issue between the two nations concerned, and American municipality is not authorized to get involved in a diplomatic issue under federal constitution. Thus, you are infringing upon the US president's power. You should revoke your planned actions immediately for this reason alone. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker is Peter Mizushima. Mizushima.
Hi, my, uh, Mayor Weaver, and good afternoon for all the council member. His speech made me a little, you know, wet my eye right now, but I'm going to talk about sister city program you have.
Just your name for the record.
Pardon?
Your name for the record.
Oh, Peter Mizushima. My time start now?
Okay.
I waste.
Start the time now.
Okay, okay. I brought one brochure here. This is, you know, part of your website page, okay? It says for sister city program, it says the selection of sister city is based upon several guideline, including similarity in the cultural activity, economics, size, business, manufacturing, entertainment, venues, accessibility, transportation, and more, okay? None of this apply for this statue program. And I have been in touch with, you know, Sister City in Japan and Mexico. None of them heard about this program from your city, okay, directly, okay? I needed some more detail about this from. He couldn't give me a detail, so I just brought one page. Now, what I'm going to tell you is about some comments, act, probably some suggestions how you can solve this problem, okay? This is good for the city of Glendale, for a citizen of Glendale and the citizen of United States. I have been living here fifty-seven, fifty-one years in United States, okay? I'm seventy-five years old. My wife is Mexican. My daughter-in-law is Korean nationality. So, you know, I don't have bias to the, you know, people of the race, okay? So what I found out, Hiroshima, you listing here, seven sister cities, but there's only six of them right now. You know why? Because Hiroshima, one of the city.
I'm sorry, your time is up.
It was, you know, fake, fake advertised.
I'm sorry, you don't have more time. I'm only doing this because we're going to be here a fair amount of time yet. Hayako Takase? Hayahiko? Your name for the record, please.
I'm an architect and.
Your name for the record.
I designed Shosan for.
Could you please state your name for the record?
City of Glendale. I think.
If you could state your name for the record, please.
Your name?
Your name for the record?
My name is Hayahiko Takase.
Start him over.
T-A-K-S-E. I was going to say, I designed Shosan for city of Glendale, and I think, I hope Shosan is important structure for city of Glendale, but we don't need any more monument. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker, oh, this is easy, Andrew Kim. Get that one easy. Your name for the record?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My name is Andrew Kim from Korean-American Forum of California. I would like to first say that this is not a diplomatic matter and the power to uphold human rights is not solely vested in the presidency. We would like to clearly establish that we have no intentional agenda to strain the relations between the Koreans and the Japanese. We are a human rights organization and our mission is to promote public awareness of this issue. We are not funded by the Korean government or serve any national interest. It is our conviction, rather, that if the Japanese and the Koreans can get on the same page in terms of their recognition of history and moral standards, we can then maintain a lasting positive relationship in the future and be able to pass it down to the next generation. I want to remark that some of the questions posed by the audience, that this is a big controversy, it shouldn't be. When you're talking about two hundred thousand women being forced to sexual slavery, you can't hide it. There are resolutions passed by the European Parliament, Philippines, Canada, US Congress that attest to our cause. I would like to refer specifically to the research done by Professor Yoshimi, who gather all of, not all of, but official documents from the Defense Agency of Japan. I would also like to refer to the Kono Statement in nineteen ninety-three, then Cabinet Secretary, who recognized government involvement, management, and the operations of sexual slavery. This is the most comprehensive, systematic, prolonged, willfully planned institution of slavery I personally have never encountered in history. We continue to, we actually appreciate the responses from the audience and.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Next speaker is Kisuke Imamura. Your name for the record.
Hi, this is, my name Kisuke Imamura. I want to against monument, peace monument, and because everything tricky story. Twenty, two hundred, two hundred thousand young side make sex slave, sex sleeve. I don't believe that they harm in population, Korean. It's a tricky stories. That's why I want to against not true this monument. And Korean sponge, sponge people, and this kind of program and agreement from Japan to Korea is already finished. After finish, one more time, you know, talk to, no future, no, no good. That's why I don't want to true story, not true story. Okay, thank you.
Next speaker, TM, Concerned Mother and Resident.
Good afternoon, my name is Tian. I am Japanese-American and am a citizen and resident of Glendale for thirty years. This is my first time appearing in front of you council and the mayor, and today I am very concerned about the approval of this project due to the fact that with my research of anti-Japanese demonstrations in Seoul, being a mother of a fifth grader and also as a single mother, I would not like to see our city or parks infiltred with such violence, which not only bring violence but hatred. I would like to see. I would like to see the council and the mayor reconsider this decision to approve and to investigate with fairness as the other speaker has said. Please take a look at this and what part of this picture, what part of this picture shows peace? I have many Korean friends. I have been a citizen here for a long time. I am not anti-Korean. But peace can be demonstrated in a different way and this is going to be an international chaos and separation and prejudice towards the Japanese-Americans who live here and for the Japanese residents that reside here. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Next speaker is Roy Honly? H-O-N-L-Y or... I am writing.
Thank you, your honor, and council members. My name is Roy Hong. I also reside in Glendale and also work here. First of all, I wanted to actually take the time to thank Mr. Dan Bell, whom came to our neighborhood when the firemen put out the fires in the hills of Glendale. What I was really impressed with was the fact that the firemen kept coming back, even though for the eyes of the normal people like myself, the fire was gone. They came back for over a week to make sure the fire is gone. I believe the comfort woman issue is just the same. It is one that doesn't appear before our eyes. But the history remains true. Our friend Andrew earlier wanted to point out that there's documents with research done by the congressional folks before they passed the resolution. I hope that our friends will take a look at it. I just want to end by saying a quote from Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. "The ultimate measure of a person is not where he stands in the moments of comfort and convenience, but where he stands at times of challenge and controversy." Sir, the next quote is, "The moral arc of universe bends at the elbow of justice." I believe you all folks have that opportunity to make sure the moral arc bends towards human rights and the victims of sexual slavery. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, Young Zook Su. Sometimes the handwriting is challenging.
Good afternoon. Honorable mayor and council members and ladies and gentlemen.
Name for the record.
I am Dr. Seo, Crescent Valley Town Council Member. I'd like to express my sincere thanks and appreciation what you have done to install the proposed peace monument. I wish you will continue to do so so we can honor that in some time. I'm here to support your project fully. Also, I'd like to express my very disappointment today. And I am very unfortunate, it is very unfortunate, to hear some of the story that has been said in this room. I read some of the articles saying, calling those poor sacrificed young girls as prostitute. I never heard in my life in front of me. How can you call those younger fourteen-years-old girl, and they took to the army camp and used sex slavery and they call them prostitute? That we should not be done that, you know? I like, I respect Japanese, I love them. But majority of Japanese, I think they accept the fact and they apologize. As long as they apologize, I'd like to embrace them and be a friend. But if they deny, then we have to wait until they learn how to express their sympathy and accept the fact findings, you know? And as long as they apologize, I'll be happy to live together. But I want to, I want them to learn the fact and then how to apologize like, you know, many like Martin Luther King and other gentleman, you know?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next one is Tom Takamai.
I have a very short statement to make.
Name for the record first.
If you're going to...
Name for the record first.
Tom Takamai.
Thank you.
If you're going to allow building election of statue, comfort women, you're gonna have to build a real big statues of one and a half millions, millions who got butchered by Turks, six million Jews who were butchered and gassed by Nazis. That's all I have to say. I'd like to render the rest of my minutes to...
You cannot do that.
I cannot do that? Okay, that's all I have to say.
Oh, okay. Thank you. Shenki Dahu? Your name, your name for the record.
Shenki Don.
Okay.
I'm seventy-nine years old. Japanese came to L.A. in 1956. I'm concerned about the issue in front of City of Glendale. First of all, I want to point out the fact it is a tremendous mystery if there were 200,000 sex slave in 1945 or before as claimed. Why that story had been hidden for fifty years? This claim by several Korean former prostitute came to Japan and asked money to Japanese court. And the money claim was denied because based on Japan-Korea Normalizing Pact of June 22, 1965, all settlement was done and Korean government should pay off all these claims of former prostitute. And I, I think this fifty years of mystery that didn't come out, this sex slave story is so unusual. Who can believe it? Well, that's a big issue. It didn't come out in Tokyo trials and there's no accusation either from Korean people or domestically in Japanese leftists, even didn't come out. All of a sudden, mid-1960s, I mean, 1990s, this came out because of this several former prostitute brought out to Japanese court.
Thank you very much.
Yes, that is my, my point.
Thank you. Next speaker, Kumiko Nui.
My name is Kumiko Inoue. I understand the suffering among many nations. But building a moment dedicated to pain and suffering couldn't ever satisfy any pragmatic nations of diplomacy. Because the government of Japan need or military was not involved in the treatment of comfort women, rather, it was Japanese police trying to prevent abduction of girl and young women from private Korea and tried recreate women for this purpose. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Ed O'Connell. Ed O'Connell?
Mr. Mayor, some of the cards were submitted from individuals downstairs, so... Ed O'Connell?
Okay, I'll hold him aside. Those are tag team match, Mr. and Mrs. Ray Lewis.
Yeah, some of these individuals may be downstairs in the lobby.
All of them? I'll try one more up here. Kiki Oshio downstairs. Dale Chang. Okay, all four downstairs coming up together. Saw my cards after these four. Staff went to get them. Ed O'Connell? Ray Lewis?
Yes.
Okay, well, thank you. You're the mystery.
Mr. Speaker, how are you today?
Fine.
Hello, ladies and gentlemen. This is a...
Name for the record. Name for the record.
Reg Lewis. I know there is a matter of concerns, demands that have, need to be met willingly and expediently. We can meet these demands if we all work together. Before I start to bring about this very important topic, I just want to know the seriousness of it for the people to know that I'm, I am for world peace, especially at this particular time for the nations of Korea and Japan, which are friendly allies. And I for one would like to help very dearly to build on their loyalty for each other. The subject was raised in 1965 and was settled and appeased by the Japanese government at a cost of $364 million to some forty-eight years ago, which Korea was satisfied. Look it up and find this out for yourself. You'll find this to be true. Although I don't condone any bad behavior of any wrongdoing towards the misfortunate comfort wives, it was widely known at what time, at the time the Korean Kempeute or military police was involved in selling comfort wives to the Japanese soldiers, who should also never be involved. But how would a monument dedicated to pain and suffering ever satisfy something that has already been settled forty-eight years ago between the government of Japan and Korea? Korean Kempeute or military police and the military auxiliaries were involved the procurement and the organization of comfort women and made use of their services according to Chung-Song Pact, found that the Koreans under the Japanese rule became fully acculturated as a main participants in the license of prostitution systems that was transplanted in their country by the colonial states. In 2007, the Japanese government made a cabinet decision. No evidence was found that the Japanese Army of the military officials seized the women and forced in 1965.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you for coming.
Yes, in a...
Name for the record.
Keiko Hosino. I'm a Japanese citizen residing in Pasadena, which is the next city to Glendale. And I like Glendale very much because it's very close. I have two things to say. Number one, this is very sad that you're accepting this statue based on manipulation or, I mean, based on, without any historical thorough investigation. And number two, I know that some people said earlier, and this will, I believe this will only enhance the hatred towards Japan and Korea. And we must overcome the hatred. I believe in the power of love and I believe the hate will never solve anything in this country or the entire world. So I strongly oppose this project. I would like you to reconsider it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker is Dale Chang. Followed by Mr. O'Connell.
First of all, thank you very much for giving such information. And then I'd like to say in advance, because I didn't plan to speak today, but I was downstairs. I listened to the huge Japanese people speak here and I found it all false information and wrong information. I studied history when I was in college.
Please state your name for your...
I'm sorry. My name is Dale Chang, C-H-A-N-G, and Dale is my American nickname. First of all, if you understand back then, hundred years ago in Korea, Korea is a very, our morality is based on a very strong comfort theory. Woman, if they want to marry, they have to keep the virgin. Keep the virgin for the woman back then is as important as they keep their life. So 200,000 women voluntary prostitute in the military camp, that's totally nonsense if you're understanding society, if you understand that time's atmosphere. And second, first of all, Japan, they first time they advertising collecting the prostitute woman. But they have a witness, but it didn't get the correct enough number. So they make cheating. I'm gonna give you a job in hospital. I'm gonna give you a job in the factory. I'm gonna, I'm gonna let you work in a restaurant. And then whoever women called, apply for this job, they collecting, they send it to the camp. So this is a totally lie. And second, third, they talking on the peace. If Japan, Japanese people, they really want the peace with Korea, they had to deeply say sorry, but they never say sorry yet. First, another thing that people talking about women, they make money in the camp, they became five times more than the soldier. This was a force. All this kind of issue, this issue, already issue in the Congress when five, about five years ago, when you have some this kind of problem. And this is nothing except to that. And fifth, the staging, having staging in Glendale City, I believe we have to give the lesson. You have to educate our children in our future. We have to give to them. If people do like this, no matter what kind of situation, even war or not, it's brutal. It's not a human being. So we give the lesson, this kind of things never happen again. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Last speaker, Ed O'Connell.
Thank you for your time. Neither had planned to speak today, so I don't have any prepared remarks. Just like to support the project.
A name for the record.
My name is Ed O'Connell. Like to support the project. I think it's a good idea. And I don't think anybody needs to be a history expert or cultural expert to understand why it's a good idea. If anyone's still confused about the issue, I think a very little bit of research will help people understand why it's a good idea. Thank you for your time. Thank you for supporting the idea.
Okay. I have no more speakers. Mr. Acholo?
Just one point because it pertains to the staff work. The source material that, that a lot of the report was based on is the, the report entitled "Subject: Japanese Military's Comfort Woman System" by Larry Nix, the Specialist in Asian Affairs, Foreign Affairs, Defense, and Trade Division, dated April 3, 2007. That was the basis for HR 121, approved by the U.S. House of Representatives as a resolution. So in terms of folks asking what research was done, the research emanates from the U.S. Congress.
Thank you. Okay. Mr. Conterro?
Okay, well, I'll start and I'm going to talk for a while and I'm certainly gonna talk for more than two minutes.
Okay.
Let me start by saying that I'm a little bit disappointed in what I've heard today. More than a little bit. I'm very disappointed in what I've heard today. And let me talk a little bit about history. And I have visited Japan, by the way, and I've visited Okinawa, a beautiful country and a beautiful prefecture in Okinawa. I was treated very well by the Japanese people, more than very well. I was treated wonderfully by the Japanese people. I was treated wonderfully by the Japanese people, and so I have a close affinity to Japan and all things Japanese. But unfortunately, after the Second World War, the people of Japan—and I fought the Americans, I fought MacArthur for this—the people of Japan did not take recognition or did not—did not—we’re not told the truth. We’re not told the truth, not just about this, but about what happened in Bataan in the Philippines to American troops, because the excuse quite often is, oh, well, but things are so tough in Japan, things are so tough in Southeast Asia and in China that we couldn’t feed the people, we couldn’t do all of these things. That’s the excuse. There was no excuse in the Philippines. The Japanese Army had landed, they had defeated the American forces, they surrounded Corregidor, there was plenty of food, there was plenty of transportation, but the Imperial Japanese Army found its way to institute the Bataan Death March, to kill Americans and Filipinos. That was the beginning of the atrocities against the United States, not what had happened in China and in Manchuria, but against the United States. That was never taught in Japanese schools. One of the speakers—and I’ll be going down and answering some of the questions, but one of the speakers said, oh, we never heard about—we—no, you never heard about it, because the Japanese government chose not to teach its people the reality and the truth of what that Imperial Army did in the Second World War. It started in the Philippines with American troops, China in Nanking, that’s another denial, oh, and that never happened, 200,000 people were not killed in Nanking by Japanese troops. There were Western—there were—there you go. There you go. There you go. Here comes a denial.
One more out first.
There were Western—there were Western people there that observed that, so once again, I guess the Chinese made it up. In Vietnam, in Malaysia, in Burma, in Indonesia, all of the native populations there also made up what took place during—the during the war. And by the way, to the issue of comfort women, there were approximately 200 Dutch women—Dutch was a colonial power in Indonesia—there were approximately 200 Dutch women that were also taken to these camps to service the Imperial Japanese Army. They certainly weren’t prostitutes. Starting with Mr. Gado, yes, I have studied history, and as I mentioned, I’ve visited Japan and Okinawa. The Japanese Consul General here in the United States does not approve what we are doing. We have been in communications with them, and they do not oppose nor approve what we’re doing. So obviously, there are some people in the Japanese government that feel differently. And let me just say that I think that probably the overwhelming majority of the people in Japan feel the same—feel the same way. I don’t think they represent some of what we’ve heard here. But the idea of the fabricated stories that they were all prostitutes, like one of the speakers said, so teenage girls, 14-year-old, 15-year-old teenage girls decided that being prostitutes was what they wanted to do, or more specifically, that their families sold them into—into prostitution. And whether it was done by Korean police—Korean police, because of the colonial status with Japan, were directly under the control of the Japanese Army and the Japanese authorities. So the idea that somehow Korean police were involved—they may have been, but working under the masters—to Ms. Komiko, who talked about, you know, victimization to forget and so forth, but that’s the problem. Whenever there are, you know, people who oppress other people, then want the victims to deny the truth. They want people to forget by denying the truth. That’s not how—how life works. There were many witnesses. As I traveled throughout Korea, not just in the cities, but in the villages, when I spoke to older people, they could all recount some instance where this girl was taken, the other girl was taken, so once again, I don’t think they—they made it up. And one of the speakers was correct. I think in the cities, it was more sophisticated. I think in the cities, the inducement was, go work in Japan, you’re going to work in a restaurant, you’re going to work in a factory, you’re going to do whatever, and I think some young girls willingly did that. However, once they got there, the situation changed. In the villages, I don’t think that was the case. I think in the villages, the girls were isolated, identified, maybe by Korean police, working under the Japanese Army, and then taken without any provocation whatsoever. Then the idea that we’re—this is against ethnic groups—no, this isn’t against ethnic groups, and this certainly isn’t against Japanese or—or Japanese people in—in general. What it is, is an indictment of the Imperial Japanese Army and the fact that at no time did Japan recognize what it did not only to these women, but throughout Asia. And once again, you didn’t know because the Japanese educational system refuses to acknowledge that anything happened. And I contrast that to Germans and Germany and what took place in Germany after the Second World War. I think there was a full acknowledgement of everything that they did to the rest of Europe. By the way, there was another comment that the Mexican sister cities didn’t know anything about it. Actually, they visited here a couple of weeks ago, and I told them exactly what we were doing and so forth, and told them the story, and they were very much accepting of what of what we had, what we had planned. And anyway, I think I don’t have to go down down the line with all of the different rebuttals, but I’m very secure. I’ve studied history all of my life. As I say, I’ve visited Japan, I’ve visited Korea. There have been numerous resolutions. The United States Congress, after researching and debating, passed a resolution, so did the Netherlands, and the Netherlands are still waiting for their apology to what happened to the Dutch residents in Indonesia, Canada. The European Union means all of the Western European Union also pass a resolution, Taiwan, and then the Philippines. But what’s of particular interest to me is that approximately 36 city consuls in Japan—approximately 36 city consuls in Japan—passed resolutions on this issue. I’ll just read a few of them. Takarazuka, Kyoshi, Sapporo, Fukuoka, Kognai, Mitaka, and on and on. Thirty-six. Thirty-six Ikoma, thirty-six cities passed resolutions. So I think we’re doing the right thing, and I’m very proud of the City of Glendale and what we’re going to do today, and that’s all I have to say for now.
Thank you. Mr. Speaker.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I haven’t been to Korea, unfortunately, and I unfortunately haven’t been to Japan, but like other people, my view of the world and my opinions are shaped by personal experiences. And this issue is one that’s actually very close to my heart, although I am ethnically neither Korean nor Japanese, but I am Armenian-American. And whether I like it or not, I’m someone who bears the burden or bears the stigma of being a grandson of a genocide survivor, and it’s very relevant, very relevant to this point. Everything that I—I do in life is shaped not only by the fact that 98 years ago, my people were slaughtered, expelled, raped, and subjected to all kinds of horrors on their own homeland, at their own—in their own home, by another nation. But worse than that, I also have to live with—with the fact that the perpetrators of the—of this horrible act of the genocide haven’t apologized for it. I’m still waiting for that apology. And I’ll tell you, that makes me very sad, makes me very resentful, often makes me very angry. And some of you will probably know from—from newspaper reports that, you know, at times it’s driven me to the point of engaging people on this issue in an inappropriate way. And I’ll tell you, denial of a crime, denial of a mass crime leads to only bad things. You know, an apology will go a long way, and admission, a—a sense of remorse will go a long way to establish a more normal, peaceful, and why not loving relationship between nations. So let me shift now to Korean comfort women issue. About two months ago, some of us were at the Glendale City Library. There was a showing of a documentary regarding Korean comfort women, and although I had been knowledgeable about the issue, I was just shocked at the similarities between the Armenian experience and the Korean experience in the sense of the horrors that—the women, the women, female victims, had to endure as a result of the Japanese occupation and the consequential comfort women situation. Japan is a great nation. Japanese people are great people, extremely advanced technologically as a democracy. In fact, the only recipient of the Medal of Honor from the City of Glendale is a Japanese American. But what’s wrong is wrong, and it has to be condemned. Now, in the last five days roughly, I and the other city council people have received over 300 emails from Japanese individuals, and the arguments were really phenomenal to me. All I had to do was replace the—the word Japanese with Turkish and the word Armenian with Korean, and—I—I was, you know, living my own—my own experience. The arguments, this is a diplomatic issue between Korea and Japan, leave it alone. This—I—I hear this all the time as an Armenian-American. The genocide issue is an issue between Armenia and Turkey, leave it alone. No, 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 it doesn’t work that way. Turkey is a huge country, Armenia is a much smaller country. In that diplomatic dispute, we all know—we all know who the winner is going to be. That applies to Japan versus Korea also. Besides, it’s a moral issue, it’s not a diplomatic issue. Another argument, Glendale has no authority to be doing anything about this issue, it’s a federal issue. Well, just last year, the Turkish government pushed a lawsuit, or last year, the year before that, which they succeeded on, the Ninth Circuit, making the same argument, making the exact same argument, saying that the recognition of the Armenian genocide by state authorities, U.S. state authorities, was not proper because it’s a federal issue. I’m sorry, it’s a moral issue, it’s a state issue, and that’s that. Third argument, this is a matter of historical dispute. You know, it’s been 40-some years, it’s been a long time, there really is no dispute there. Do a little research, I—I did my research, there is no dispute, it’s a historical fact, let’s not—let’s not go there. It just doesn’t hold water. That argument has no bearing on this issue. The argument that these women were prostitutes is, again, it’s very offensive, it’s very insulting, not just to Koreans, I think it’s insulting to everyone, because of all the circumstances that were already spoken of by Councilmember Quintero. And the one argument that someone made that why—if—if this thing really existed, why did it take such a long time for it to surface? Well, here’s an interesting issue, how about the horrible stigma that these women had to live with? How about the fact that they didn’t want to go out into the world while they were still young and announce to everyone that, hey, by the way, I was raped by hundreds of of soldiers? How about that? I recommend that those who doubt this issue, watch a documentary by an Armenian—Swedish Armenian documentalist, Susan Cardellian, called Grandma’s Tattoos. And it’s a movie about a woman, her grandma, who lived with a tattoo below her lip. Her lip was tattooed, and this part of her mouth was tattooed. And this kid never understood why her old grandma was tattooed, and only when she got old, she had to ask—because grandma had died. She had to ask other people, why was grandma tattooed? And they explained to her, your grandma, during the Armenian genocide, was enslaved and turned into a prostitute, and that tattoo, that was a sign of her being prostitute. Guess what? Grandma wasn’t out there advertising it, she wasn’t telling her granddaughter that, hey, by the way, for three years I had been a prostitute to the Turkish army. So that’s probably why this issue came up late. Again, this is a moral issue. We are taking a meaningful step to show our moral support, sense of camaraderie, and our sharing of the pain that our Korean-American brothers and sisters feel about this issue. It’s very simple. That’s why I’m in support of it, and I’m strongly in support of it. If anything, after today, I’m even more strongly in support of it. Lastly, and I appreciate a couple of people raising this issue, the—the issue of the monument to the Armenian genocide. As many of you know, the City of Glendale, some years back, allocated plot of land, territory for the establishment of Armenian genocide, and I hope that under our new city manager, this issue will—will gain more momentum, and this long overdue process will reach its logical conclusion, because in two years, it’ll be 100 years since the Armenian genocide. It’s still unrecognized by the—by the government of Turkey. The Armenian-American community, which is so prominent in the City of Glendale, still bears that pain, and we can set things right and move on, and people can be friends with each other and can love each other and live in peace. That’s it.
Thank you. Mr. Friedman.
Thank you. I want to thank everyone who came out today. This is certainly a very passionate issue for people, it’s a very divisive issue. I have to say, I have a slightly different take on this than my colleagues, because I don’t see this as designed to be a monument about—to shame Japan, to say that—to punish Japan for denying these events. I just don’t see it that way. In fact, I think that if the Japanese government had publicly acknowledged these events, you would still have the same monument. I think it would still have the same meaning. I think that the issue over who was at fault really misses the intention, I believe, of what this monument is about. It forgets about the victims, it forgets about these women. And whether or not they went willingly, whether they were considered prostitutes at the time or were forced, to me is a moot argument, because there’s no such thing as a willing 14-year-old prostitute, it just doesn’t exist. A few of the speakers who were opposed to the monument said something to the effect of that the women were prostitutes because things were so difficult that they felt they had to do this, or they were coerced into doing this, but that they were prostitutes. Well, even if you believe that, why then would you deny a monument to the tragedy of 14, 13-year-old girls being prostitutes, or feeling that they had to because the situation was so desperate that they had to do something like this? To me, that—even if the—even if I believe the Japanese story of what happened, I still believe that what happened to those girls was a tragedy, and I think that even—everybody in this room, even those opposed to this monument, can put aside that shame or that anger and say, what happened to those girls was a tragedy. And that’s what this monument is about. It’s about innocence, it’s about the horrors of war. That’s why the monument does not say anything about Japan’s role, that’s why there’s no placard or explanation condemning the Japanese Army, condemning the Japanese people or the current Japanese government. That misses the point of this monument. This monument is to—about those women and their experiences. Now, I do believe that in this country, that the U.S. Congress has made the position of the United States clear, that the women were coerced, that there was force. Now, was Korea complacent in that? Perhaps they were, but that doesn’t diminish the tragedy of what happened to those girls. And that’s what the monument is about. And I hope that everybody—the Japanese-Americans here, the Japanese in Japan—can put aside whatever feelings they have about who’s to blame and think about the victims. Because whoever you think is to blame, I think we can all say that those women were victimized, those girls were victimized, whoever the victimizer was. And to me, that’s what the monument is for. When I look at the monument, and the whole time I’ve seen it, I thought that it was about the tragedy of what happened in World War II to these 13- and 14-year-old children. So I think it’s very appropriate, I think that that’s something that’s very important to the Korean community here in Glendale. I think it’s something that anybody should be able to get behind morally. And certainly, I—I would hope that rather than using this as a wedge to drive us apart, that people think about really the intention about those children, and look at this monument not as a blame or shame to any nation, but to think of it as something to remind us that war has consequences, that young children are victimized in this world, not just during wartime, but—but also not in wartime, and to look at it that way and to open your heart and—and remember those women, because that’s what this is about. So I do think the monument is appropriate, I will support it. I think that whatever happened was a tragedy, and it’s something that all of us should remember and try to prevent from happening anywhere in the world. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, does this microphone work? It’s working, okay. I want to be clear, number one, that I do support this monument, and I also want to be clear that my support for this monument is no way meant to humiliate or dishonor the good people of Japan. The Japanese government has gone much farther, light-years farther than the government of Turkey, Republic of Turkey, in admitting and acknowledging some of their war crimes and genocide against the Armenian people. They still deny it. I understand that this has been a issue of conversation in Japan, and there have been some efforts at reconciliation as well as reparations. This is about the women and young girls who suffered during World War II. We have a sister city, in fact, several sister cities in Korea. We have a sister city, in fact, several sister cities in Korea, and we owe it to them to respect their honor and their memory, and yes, I have heard firsthand, I have had firsthand discussions with a Korean comfort woman survivor, Grandma Kim, a year and a half ago, came to Glendale and spoke to us. And I believed her when she talked about the pain that she endured, I believed what she said. But it's not about punishing any country, this isn't about who the good guys and who the bad guys are, this is about commemorating man's inhumanity to man, and it takes place around the world at all times, by all different countries, by every single different country. No country can stand up and say, we are without sin in causing pain to others, to other men, to other people. So I do support this, I hope that we can move forward, we are beginning to populate our park with monuments from sister cities, we have a sister city or two, I thought we had two in Japan, I know Osaka is, is one, the official one. I invite the members of Glendale, residents of Glendale, of Japanese heritage, to come together, to propose a appropriate monument to honor our ties with Japan and their contributions to Glendale and to the community, we would be happy to welcome them, as well as, I'm sure, our Korean brothers and sisters in Glendale would also step up and welcome an appropriate monument. Mr. Mayor, I, I'm glad that we're doing this, and I know this will be the first of many monuments honoring our sister cities in the Central Park.
Mr. Mayor, can I have just 30 seconds before you conclude?
Yes, go ahead.
Oh, just, just to clarify, I mean, it sounded, it sounded like my or my, Mr. Quintero's support for the monument was based on a desire to punish someone, I'll restate what I said again, this is a meaningful step to show our commiseration, our willingness to share the pain with our Korean-American brothers and sisters for the horrors that they suffered as a result of the comfort women tragedy. That's it, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
And I feel the same way.
My turn? I was born in this city 74 years ago this month. I've seen light years of change occur during my lifetime. I'm Swiss German, and I'm married to a Filipino. Father-in-law was in the Bataan Death March, he escaped and joined the American forces. My mother-in-law hid in the hills, a Japanese officer befriended her and my wife, who was a baby at the time. If it wasn't for that Japanese officer giving food to my future wife, she wouldn't be with me today for 45 years. One of my brothers-in-law is married to a Japanese lady. So, I want you to understand, I have history in my family about it. I've been to sister city, Japanese sister city events at their homes, not in recent years, but I used to. And I tend to agree with my colleagues have all said, though I wish I had more knowledge of it, because I'd like to be certain of it. I happen to believe every generation has those despots that go out and do these horrendous crimes to humanity. It's not going to happen in our lifetime, it will continue infinitum. There's always people out there that are willing to commit crime, have no compassion, no feeling. Having said that, and I hope everybody understands what I'm saying, Korean and Japanese, consistent with my past position on this, I will not vote for this monument at this time. For over a decade, I've sat here 17 years, over a decade, we have talked about developing a master plan for our tiny little Central Park. We talked about putting parking underneath the park, it will service the adult recreation center, service the library, service the neon museum coming in, and other areas. We need, we need that parking structure, one level under, then your master plan goes on top. We have everybody, all sister cities want to put monuments in now, the Comfort Lady wants, they want in, they want to rename the park, Veterans Park, after veterans that fought in other wars outside of the country. Now, until we develop a master plan for the park, until that general, that general, the general public of this city get to vote, or through public hearings, and say what they want in our little one-block park, after we draw up renderings and master plan, then and only then, I'll vote for anything in that park. I don't want to put monuments in and then have to move them afterwards. This, this park is the City of Glendale Public Park, Central Park. And I think we better get on the ball and at least design it, even if we don't have the funding, as we've talked about it for a decade now. Go out, visit the public, see what the public thinks. You want to devote the whole park to monuments, so be it, I don't believe that's my decision to make. While I agree with what they're all saying up here, my colleagues are saying, I won't vote yes until we do this thing the right way. I did a similar thing back in 1997, voted against a housing unit, because I said we had to make a master plan of downtown Glendale. This morning at lunchtime, I cut, I did the groundbreaking ceremony for an apartment in that very spot. So I want things to go in a sequence, a logical order. I hope everybody understood that. So that's why I'm going to vote no, for no other reason. And I don't want to see in any of the press or TV shows saying, oh, Weaver's on the side of the Japanese, he doesn't believe in the Korean cause, that is so much BS, I don't want to see that. I've just told you my rationale, and I hope I'll be respected for what I believe as a lifelong resident of my city. With that...
I'll move 1A. I'll move 1A.
Roll call.
Councilmembers, Friedman?
Yes.
Jarian?
Yes.
Quintero?
Yes.
Sanaya?
Yes.
Mayor Weaver?
No. Okay, and may I thank all of you for coming and voicing to democratic way, thank you so very much. Is there a motion?
There, Mr. ...
Do you want to do this?
We cannot adjourn, we're going to recess after we read closed session items into the ...
I move we adjourn.
I know, do you want to adjourn for council and then read the closed session in?
There's, there's, we will read closed session items and then recess to closed session.